All right, it's seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order and take roll. Kyle?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Lee?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yep.
And Steve?
Yep.
Consent agenda. Go ahead and motion. Kyle, you have a second. Craig? We'll take roll. Kyle?
Yep.
Kevin? Lee?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yep.
And Steve?
Yep.
Visitors, none. Public Works Report.
I didn't have one in the packet. Been having issues with the pressure out of the Sega cells, the air pressure. The fuses in the cells are getting plugged. Walker was having the same issue and they actually just had theirs cleaned. Sally had a cost of about twenty-six thousand. It's some kind of acid cleaning. The acid itself costs them about fifteen thousand and then the labor for someone to do it was like almost twelve.
Did they have to pull them out?
I don't know what they have. It's some kind of acid bath, I would think they would just have to put the acid in there and let it sit, I would think. I'm not real sure on the procedure. I wanted to go up and see what they did, but I couldn't get the time nailed down for when they're actually going to be there. But when I was talking to HR Green guy, they actually designed some of them. He actually designed walkers. And the one guy said he would be interested, happy to look at our stuff. I don't know if it costs us anything for him to come look at it and go over stuff, but he was, he said he was on site at theirs when they did it, a week or two ago.
Which one?
Matt Lindemann.
Okay, I don't remember Matt.
But that's all there is on that. It's something we're probably gonna have to do. Hopefully get through the year. The biggest thing would be in the winter, if the oxygen gets too low, it could affect the ammonia levels. I don't know until that point.
I guess my opinion is you need to, let's move forward with getting up, finding out what's going on and, because I just assume not getting trouble. So. That's my opinion. Just get a quote and figure out what it's gonna cost. See what it's gonna cost to have him take a look and, you know, double check things from HR Green, whatever.
Right. I don't want to go into winter.
Right, yeah, because I don't know how effective that'll work.
It's kinda getting to the time of year where another month and a half, two months, I'll be having to do the start the step peak process. You don't really wanna be messing with stuff when you do that either, so.
Right, yeah.
Do we need to do some sort of approvals if they are gonna charge, come down here and do this? Or is this, is this something we need to do right now or then?
Worst case scenario, we could have a special meeting, Lee.
Okay. I just, I just want to give him the authority if he needed the authority.
I mean, I can email and find out what he, he didn't, if he got back to me later, I was already gone for the day, so I didn't get back to him on if it could cost anything for him to come down and go over. And I could possibly go up there and talk to a few of the just-in-circa athletes.
Yep, I know where they're at. But it'd probably actually be better if he could
Look at it.
Put his eyes on, if he helped with that one, so.
And I don't know if it's, if there's a company that does it for the people that design the Sega system or if they just have people in the area. It was kind of vague on, on that part of it, too.
Okay. Well, like I said, please, please move forward with that, keep that going, so we, we definitely want to stay in compliant. So, anything else, Rod?
Not really. I've got some stuff for the locating, depending though, for the next thing on you.
Okay, well, if there's nothing else on the Public Works Report, then we'll move into the discussing possible action regarding water line mapping.
I got three quotes. One from HR Green, they're probably, they're the most expensive, but they're also probably the most, most in-depth on what you can do. The initial startup in the first year, it'll be nine thousand forty-five, then we got an annual fee of three thousand five hundred and forty-five. And those numbers are if we would do the mapping or locating, then we'd have to find a GPS and stuff. If they come and did it, he's, just a rough estimate, he said it might, you know, twenty thousand without it, for them just to do the mapping, it would depend on, you'd have to know how many things we want located in terms of services and valves and stuff like that to get a better, a better estimate. And then another one was Silver Smith. Their initial setup in the first year was sixty-four oh four, and that includes GPS and tablet. And their annual fee is eighteen thirty-four, and that includes like a cell data package, which I don't know if we could do that on our own as the city for the mapping part. And then he said they can do mapping, they just hired out, so we didn't have a number on that. And then the last one was Goldfinch. Their initial setup, you know, for the first year, depending on, there's several packages. If we do the mapping, it's twenty-two hundred bucks. And then we would have to rent or buy a GPS, and then the annual fee would be three hundred bucks. If they map and do the setup and stuff, it's startup cost of thirteen, thirteen thousand two fifty and an annual fee of three hundred dollars. So we'll just kinda, if you want them to do the mapping, us to do the mapping. I guess my, my thing is I'm gonna have to locate everything anyway. So, I mean, you'd be hired having, having me do it plus hiring someone to do it if we did it that way, but I mean, that's up to you guys, too.
What kind of budget do we have allocated for this? That makes a difference in what we can do.
Yeah, good deal.
We still have all that COVID money. That's what we were, we were, we specifically reserved this to do the, we agreed to do the mapping, so we're okay.
Otherwise, we're gonna lose that anyway.
We're gonna lose the bond, so we
Well, I didn't know if we were gonna go over pending on what we selected to do on that.
Do we have anything else we're gonna do with that COVID money or?
It's up to you guys. I mean, they
I mean, what else can we use it for?
Well, we can use it for a lot of stuff. I think we broke it down to the, you guys decided on the mapping and then
What's like, is maybe
Four meters? Maybe talked about the, the septal meters, the new meters to get some more.
When's the deadline you gotta have it used up by?
Well, if, if they, they've been back and forth with that. I think we still have, we were told last, last training it went to that, that don't trust that they're not gonna come back and, and say, hey, if you haven't used it or allocated it, which we did allocate it. We put it in writing that we were gonna put it towards us. So I think we have a year.
A year.
And we got twenty-seven thousand something, is that right?
Yeah, I think it's, I don't remember.
Twenty-seven, or it was twenty-seven something.
It was roughly around in there, and that's what we put aside for the mapping and to use for, for public, to use for mapping or, you know, or the meters.
I mean, that nine thousand dollar one sounds good, but not for the three thousand dollars a year for that.
Well, that's what I'm getting at here, because that COVID money's gonna go away and then we're gonna have to cut the budget.
I don't like that three thousand. Hell, we've gotten by with all these years without any kind of thing, we've gotten by, but.
But, but, but the whole, the whole problem, though, with that mentality, though, Craig, is, the problem is that if something would happen, you know.
It's easier, I understand it's easier, but all the people in town right now are thinking about their water bill and their
Oh, I understand that, I understand that.
They see us going around doing this, they're gonna say, what's that costing us now?
What was it when we hit the lines up here?
But it's essentially not costing them anything.
Well, they don't know that, they
Yeah. That's what, that's what they're explaining to us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
And but, I was, well, these programs, but I agree with Kyle on that at three thousand dollars a year, we'd venture to come out of our budget somehow.
Yeah, that part, yeah, to thirty-five.
What was the middle one, Rod? Fifteen hundred a year?
Eighteen, I think.
That, that's eighteen, six hundred of that is the cell data, which can, which could change over time, too.
Oh, yeah.
So that's starting, they had six hundred in there, which
Would you know that's gonna go up?
And I don't know if you could use a, if your phone would have enough to do a, whatever they call it, connect to your phone through it.
Oh, for the high, for hotspot?
I mean, you know the system. Is that low one, would that work for us? The low key one for the three hundred a month or?
It probably would, because we don't have a lot of
It, the, the, expensive stuff is nice, phone bills and whistles, but we don't need it. We're basically just mapping our water and our sewer lines.
Yes, yes.
But I mean, five years down the road, can we always update to a better system?
Well, I'm sure we could. Okay, so the questions I have for you, Rod, is where is the other two companies out of? Are they
The low key one, or the?
They're, uh, where else go? Goldfinch, the guy said he was from, he was from up in the, up by Worlington in that area.
Piazza.
But, yeah, maybe they're out of Piazza.
One of them was Piazza.
He's out there, but wasn't living there, but they're in the area, and then I think Silver Smith, I think is in like, going or something.
They're gonna come down.
It says Michigan here, but they might, I think they have several offices, but, I mean, it was where, he was here, he didn't have to steal or anything, I don't think, to come talk to me about the stuff, so.
All right. I mean, if Rod could do the mapping, I'd like
I guess that, that's the only question. Would they rent you the equipment to, to show you how to run that stuff?
With Silver Smith, that quote included the GPS and tablet and they would train on it. It would come down and train on how to input the stuff.
And that was the middle of the road one, or is that the?
That was the Silver Smith, the initial startup in the first year was sixty-four oh four with an annual fee of eighteen thirty-four.
I don't see a map.
It's the middle one.
So which, which in your opinion will work for you?
I mean, they're all decent, and the only thing is with, with that one, you get the GPS and everything with it.
Instead of having to go rent it?
Yeah, whereas with the, the Goldfinch, the yearly fee is cheaper, three hundred a year, but you have that initial big cost upfront.
I, I questioned that part just a little bit because I knew what that stick costs. So, I
And, and that was with, with them doing all the mapping.
That was with them doing all the mapping?
I mean, they're, uh, let's see, they're, they had a rental fee in here, it was
Could give us more money to our readers by going out. The middle one.
Oh.
Unless I don't think we need to hide that.
Yeah, if you do the one where we map it with twenty-two hundred initial cost, they say you can rent a GPS from them at a flat fee of two fifty for the GPS subscription and a daily usage rate of twenty-five dollars a day, so.
Oh, that's on.
Depends on how long it takes.
We get one, one piece for itself right there. Oh, yeah, it does, it does.
And there, there's another company, Subsurface, which I don't know much time, they, you can get the GPS and stuff for like four grand. And their monthly thing is like, starts at thirty and then it kind of goes up depending on how much you want, I think. But it's all, and how much you wanna put into it, I think is how much your monthly stuff costs. It means we got the COVID money before we talk about it every month, before we do that, I mean, I'm making the motion, go with the middle one and be done with it, if that's what we want, if we want it, for sure.
I, I'm flexible, I'm, it's, as far as I'm concerned, it's
Yeah, I think
It's whatever Rod wants to use, when he feels more comfortable.
I think that, that looked like a pretty good system and stuff, and, I mean, pretty good price, and the tablet, GPS and that.
And the reoccurring cost for that one would be?
That was what, eighteen?
Eighteen hundred. That's the eighteen hundred one.
But, but that, that included the cell data, which
I would have to double check to make sure that if we could split that off onto our own, we put on the city plan or something.
Our, our, our city plan, should be able to.
And that would eliminate some of that six hundred of that cost, so, you know, like twelve hundred, whatever.
The Silver Smith?
Silver Smith?
Silver Smith.
That's the middle, the middle of the road.
So, you, did you make the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, Steve, Steve made the second. We'll take roll. Kyle?
Yep.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Lee?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yep.
And Steve?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll now jump down to number five. We will go down to E. Discussing possible action on zoning. Board of Adjustment, permanent property.
So all, all this was, was that Pam had some questions, and I emailed her. You guys have all the questions that she had asked, we emailed back and forth, and Sherry had sent it to your, Pam's questions to the attorney. And so you guys have that letter there and his response back on that. And so there was, I don't, I know that, and Lou had quite a date today, too. And he had, I mean, the, you guys had given them until November, so this isn't response, in response to, gotta do something right now. This is in response to the questions and some of the suggestions from the attorney, so that you didn't sit on something, that you needed to move on something or make any type of decisions. So that's all, all this was.
Okay, so which one is there?
Remember, they're colored lines, so I can't tell.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
I have no idea what.
Okay, so this is, this is
I know that's there, which?
Oh, I'm sorry, they're light commercial.
They're light.
Yeah, light commercial. And they were, this one, they were light commercial.
This was light commercial here?
Yeah, and that was in two thousand
Two-five, or five?
Five, yeah.
When this one was
And then there's the letter from the attorney, I'm just recommendations from Pam, so, only because we were going through this, I sent Pam an email just to tell her that we were looking at it, just so she could be present, in case she had questions, too. Pam, did you get your questions answered that you had?
Well, and I, you may not even know the answers to those, it may go back, we, you know, like when Marlin originally bought the property, the intent was to have a farm implement dealership. And it's been that forever until he closed in the eighties, and then, you know, it's just become art trucking, and then we've just leased the top up to lose, so. In this late, early sixties, whatever it was, you know, I don't know what existed for zoning and what the rules were, you know? I was just curious on that part, and when would industrial have come into play and, I don't know how things were done back then.
We'll see in what, sixty-seven, it was zone service retail.
There you go.
Which, which to me, means, you know, like a, a service, which would have been, you know, the implement store, I mean.
When they changed in oh
Then in oh five, it became
Industrial, light industrial.
Commercial.
Light commercial.
Light commercial.
So oh five was when everything changed?
That was the next
That's the next update that I, I have there.
What prompted, prompted that?
Well, some of this, I, I didn't know either, so I did a little bit of research, what I've had time to do. And some of them, a lot of this came about from our comprehensive plan, you know, when EC cog
This one did?
Yes.
The last?
So, but, but there's a comprehensive plan even with the one from two thousand five.
Oh, is there?
And so it was a public survey from the residents of Wyoming, and we have it in there, and you guys can look at it, but it was a public survey on, on what people wanted, what they were looking for, what the goals were for Wyoming, just different things like that. And then EC cog must have sat down with the Board of Adjustment and went through to determine, you know, what would be moved and where, and how they would do it based upon location, too, so.
What Laramie's contact is at that time when they were
Everybody, to my knowledge, whenever they do a Board of Adjustment meeting or a, any type of, it hasn't been changed in a long time, but my understanding is with the, when there's a Board of, per Sherry, when there's a Board of Adjustment meeting and there's gonna be any zoning change and somebody, like you wanna do a zoning change, you have to contact the surrounding neighbors.
I think so, yeah.
And they have to say, yes, I'm okay with that, and then you kind of have to do like a survey type thing to make sure that's okay. Because that's why they left it the way they did, is because a lot of the, when you look at the comprehensive plan, one of the number one things that the, the residents wanted was Wyoming cleaned up. That's why we went with hiring somebody to do this. That was one of the number one things, so. But that was just for me reading that comprehensive, or starting to go through it. So that was that.
Back then, when anybody signed up, might not even have known nothing.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Might not even have thought nothing different, I mean, or I guess I would.
They probably would say, we're just gonna leave things alone and just
Change it to this and that was it.
Yeah, so, I'm sure it was, could have run into problems, Marlin would have jumped on it back then.
So where do we stand now with it, so we can
Well, you can read the, the, did you read the letter from the lawyer?
Mike Graves did, yeah.
He, he gives suggestions on what he thought, you know, you could or couldn't or shouldn't or shouldn't.
Yeah, he was saying something to me the other day about it as well.
Yeah. I think I did have, and I know Charlie was in here when one of them came in, but I did get two complaints, just so you know, about the property. But I got two complaints about that, about Laramie's, and the complaints were more of, what were we gonna do with it? You know, with, with all the cleaning up going on, so I don't know if rumor mills, I don't know what, what that extent were. And neither one wanted to, for name mention, you know, that's very common. And then I had two on the next one, on Kenyon's, too, on the next property we're gonna do.
On what? Kenyon's?
Kenyon.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, gas station.
But I mean, we're agreed for, I mean, Lou's gonna clean up the ones that
Yeah.
So I mean, that's pretty much taken care of.
Yeah, they've done everything we've asked them to do, whereas process of doing
He's working, yeah.
I'm sorry, I
Or we gave him a timetable, or, he has a timetable to do it, to do what he needs to do.
But I think what was suggested in there, if you read it, if you had time to look at it from Pam, is that it's not needing, so you, you know, meeting the requirements of being a light commercial, so you guys would have to do some type of reservation or adjustment. I think it's that what he mentioned in there?
That, that's where the, the decision from the Board of Adjustment was supposed to come in, that they could use it, because it supposedly wasn't needing the requirements of light commercial, the Board of Adjustment could say that, yes, we're going to allow them to store trailers there.
So, so we, like right now, we, we, I don't think the council can just say, well, we're okay with the way it is, especially if we're enforcing stuff.
No, we can't.
That's what I mean.
It's absolutely
So, but it has to, because it's not needing a definition of light commercial, you'll, you have to go by some of the guidelines that the lawyer gives us.
That's the gist that I got.
Yeah, me too. I mean, it's up to you guys, but that's what I got from reading it, and that's why I wanted Pam to be aware of what was, you know, that we got that and what was going on, so.
Hire me this guy to do the yard leasing, I think it's gonna haunt us for quite some time.
Yeah, but we gotta do it, Craig.
Oh, you grab all the lotus leaves, you got problems with it.
But we need junk all over town?
Yeah, we can't have junk all over town, we gotta keep
I'm just saying, people have asked me about it, like, we shouldn't be paying somebody else to do that, but
But, but the, the biggest reason that we're doing it this way
It takes the pressure off
Because he's impartial.
Right.
And then we don't have our people going out, making the accusations, and he's supposed to be an expert, so to speak, in the code and state laws. So then it's kind of
Well, I understand, I understand it, but
Right, I know, but that's, those are also the things that we just, you know, if people are concerned, that's what you need to explain to them, or come talk to me.
And I think it come around, too, just by reading the comprehensive plan, when they did the survey with the residents of, and I remember, because I was on council at the time, so I kind of remembered that. But that was like one of the number one things that residents wanted, was things cleaned up.
Yeah, so.
So, I'm a little bit confused. Where do we stand with Laramie's now?
So
Can we do anything as a council to help them?
So basically, we either have to change the zoning, or we have to push it on, or not push it, but send it to the Board of Adjustment so that they can give the variance to store trailers, because the way the attorney is reading it, the way I understand this, is that because they're storing trailers there, it is not qualifying for the uses under the C-one is, is not there. It's not allowed to be used for stories like that at the moment, the way it's zoned. So they either have to have a letter from the Board of Adjustment that says it is allowable, or we have to change the zoning to, what did he say?
Light industrial.
To, to industrial.
Industrial.
I believe. Then they can, then it's no hold bar, is my understanding. So.
So what's the obstacles to changing the zoning now?
God, I don't know. I don't know what we have to do to change the zoning. Did Doug tell us?
Yeah, a hundred dollars for a year.
He didn't, he didn't recommend you do that, though.
Yeah, he didn't recommend that we do that.
Because you're, you're, you're doing this for a lot of, I got a whole stack here for you guys to look at, for a lot of people, so, you know, you've got the other one. It might be better off to have the Board of Adjustment see if they're willing to do
Allow the storage
Because when you do that, then the next person who you're gonna have to enforce something with is gonna say, why aren't you gonna change that for me? Because we've got one here that I got the same thing for, which I'll show you guys in a minute. So, I don't
It's on the Board of Adjustments?
Yeah, that's a good question.
It's in your book. It is Deb Hyken, Todd Walter, Doug McCloy, Jim Icorn, and my wife. I'm assuming, because we actually need to, we'll need to update that, because there's three, two of them that expire in twenty-three. I just don't know when that is in twenty-three, but that's the current members of the Board of Adjustment.
Well, if he recommends not putting it into
Not changing it.
I'd say send it to the Board of Adjustments.
Okay. I believe we need a motion for that. Okay, Kevin? You have a second? Kyle? Take roll, Kyle?
Yep.
Kevin?
Yep.
Lee?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yeah.
And Steve?
Yep.
Okay. So we'll have to, you know, figure it with the
But I mean, we can meet with the Board of Adjustment, Craig.
I don't think we
No.
We can. They gotta be impartial, to make a decision based upon what we have.
So Tammy will present the facts, that we have the same facts here, and then they will have to make a decision on these facts to allow variance for the parking of the trailers, so.
Otherwise, what would happen? I mean, all the trailers would have to be moved then, or?
There is that possibility. If the Board of Adjustment comes back and says, no, that we're not going to grant them the variance, then yes, that could be the consequences.
And then can it come, I'm, I'm, this is hypothetical, at least, I'm not suggesting this, but I'm talking worst case scenario. Okay, they don't give the variance, we then still could change the zoning to, to make that work?
I don't know, Lee, because you, that's where it gets, I don't know. You, you've done, you've, you've taken something to the Board of Adjustment, and if you don't follow their, you know, what they decide, I don't know what you're gonna get into.
I mean, that property was before light industrial, huh?
I don't
No, no, it was never.
And doesn't anything grandfather come into play here? I mean, that's been there for as long as I remember.
It's what was zoned here, so.
I don't understand it, why it would not have automatically been zoned industrial versus commercial, because of how the property was being used this whole entire time.
Well, I, see, like I said, back in sixty-seven, this map says service retail. Well, that to me, but then when it went to five, and this one, you know, five, what would this one
But the property's still being used the same, I mean, the trailers are all for sale, the same as
Yeah, because that, that retail as well.
You have a farm machinery for sale?
What's yours, industrial?
Yeah. I mean, Mike's is all industrial, now C-one.
You guys all have a, a map in there?
We're, we're
You know, because if that technically got changed, that'd be like saying that Mike and I couldn't have all our trucks and trailers home at the same time.
I think that's why when they have those meetings, you're, you know, it's, if you, I don't know, I would never have known either. But that's their public meetings and they make an announcement and stuff, because I wouldn't have known. Until I came in this, I had no idea. You know, I'm learning right with you guys, I had no clue.
Well, but you're all, you're, you're down here into
Yeah.
Whatever this is, is that
Industrial.
Is that industrial?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, you can't.
Yeah.
I can't, I can't tell the colors on the map, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, this is industrial.
This is all industrial?
That's industrial, and then I think Brad's over here is the only one outside of that. What, was this industrial too?
That's the old lumberyard.
Yeah, so that is, and then this is what they call downtown commercial, or something like that. It's a central commercial, yeah, this, that's all downtown here.
And then what's this?
I don't, I don't know what that is.
Well, that'd be Dirks's Station.
Yeah, that's what that is, right there.
But what's its zone?
It's white, it's industrial, I think, isn't it? Yeah.
Yeah.
It's purple, right there.
Okay, I can just see it's darker.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, sorry, guys.
Yeah, and then the rest of them are, like, this is light commercial, light commercial, light commercial, light commercial.
See, I guess we let it commercial? They got a, right LP tank, that's zone light commercial too, and then where their buildings are, that's industrial. Shouldn't they be the same?
Where the LP tank is.
That's the Anheuser LP that's zone different versus here.
And you got all these houses here, that are zoned light commercial, why would...
All, all of them right there on the ground?
Because when, when we bought that, when my father-in-law bought that, he bought that house and the lot in front.
And there was car washes there too.
So, the house, and then Angric's house on the corner is also zoned light commercial, because Jeff had welding and other things in there, crane business, and, you know, that technically probably should have been industrial as well. I don't know. Maybe some businesses on Main Street should be industrial. And, you know, looking at code at other cities, our code is very similar to Holland's, like, almost word for word. It was probably done at the same time. But if you look at someone like, like Anamosa, their difference between commercial and industrial are very different. Industrial for Anamosa is like true industrial, like chemical manufacturing, this kind of manufacturing. Work versus industrial is what our Wyoming's code covers. I mean, our codes are very different. So if they did that just because we're a small town, and it was written that way under advice from ECI or a lawyer, I mean, I have no idea. But...
I don't, I don't, I don't know. How can, the property owners, they can meet with the Board of Adjustments, or?
I think so, yeah.
I've never looked into it at all.
I think that, remember the, there was a form you could fill out, it was a hundred dollars if you wanted to go before the Board of Adjustment.
If you're gonna get father with them, then, I mean, we can't do nothing with, or do meet with them, right?
You can't, I, I think we have to stay on, we can't be biased.
Right. We have to, we have to let them meet, and we get, they have to present their findings to us.
And then, yeah. That's my understanding. You guys know what, I mean, I'm really learning with you, so...
Well, if we, if the city code stays the same, maybe it's in our best interest to change the zoning and meet the zoning group. Because if the code stays the same, I mean, it technically should be zoned industrial. Because I don't foresee our business, Laramie equipment, crane and life stuff, whatever, now changing.
What is the reason Doug didn't want us to go up?
Um, it's in your, you guys have the same letter I wrote, right there. Do you want me to read it out loud, or do you guys just go and look at it?
I got it.
You got it? Okay. The third paragraph on down just answered some of Pam's questions, if it's confusing to you. Like the tax question, and, and what should we do with the hundred dollar fee for the BOA and stuff. And then on the very, very last paragraph, he addresses it again.
I guess the only, the only question that I have is I don't know what the descriptions are, what...
Right.
You know, what, what commercial allows, what industrial allows, you know, that.
I have that printed off.
Was that official on, or, you don't have your computer yet?
I have it up.
Well, we've already, you guys have already made a motion and voted on it, so, to send it to the Board of Adjustment, to get their opinion. So, I think they can make the recommendation that whether the code should be changed. If I'm reading this right. It's because he said he would suggest, give consideration whether the code should be changed, etc. Because I think, I think one of the reasons why Doug is probably not recommending that it go to be industrial is that we don't have the same situation that we have north of town, where Buster's Old Ben's site is, Sheldon has. Maybe that's why, because if that was commercial, then they could store anything on it, consider it useful stuff, yet it's a disaster. If you know what I'm talking about out there.
So where, where northeast side of freight is, real MSI, that used to be all government grain bins there.
Not at city limits.
Yeah, that's out of, that's out of city limits. So it didn't matter?
Right, I suppose.
Just, just like that, it's a little bit farther north, you know? That's the only thing that I'm thinking that maybe why Doug didn't, doesn't recommend just changing it to industrial. Because I think maybe under the industrial, you can probably use it as long as you're storing whatever if it... You can pile it there and say it's, you know, for sale, or it's usable stuff.
His triangle, that's always been classified as a residential.
Triangle?
Yeah.
I have no idea.
Even when they had their feed business in there?
Let's see, Washington Street.
You wouldn't have thought it would have been.
No, it's in, two thousand and five, it was C1.
C1 commercial?
I don't know. Nothing missing right here. That's, that's the...
No, yeah.
That got changed.
Because that, I don't know. I guess we just have to see what the Board of Adjustment says. We can... I don't remember why we ended up changing all these a hundred percent either, so, I just know we did it. Okay, I think, I think that's where we're at right now, is to present all the information to the Board of Adjustment, and see if they're making another meeting.
And Pam, do you want me to let you know you want to attend that night?
Yeah.
All right. All right, let's move back, um, to five A, discuss the possible action, approving citywide cleanup day, Wednesday, September thirteenth, six to three.
So, um, Kuzner's finally got, they did get back to me on that, and, um, we wanted to just have the roll-off put for one day. And they said that they could place it on a, you thought, middle of the week, Wednesday. They placed it on Tuesday, September thirteenth, in the afternoon, but wouldn't be able to pick it up until Thursday morning on the fifteenth. So you guys are okay with that then?
That's fine, should be fine.
And they, and they can't cover it, so, you know, um, I don't, they did ask for to place it, and I did say that they could place it, um, but back behind the building, and I don't know, I don't know if we have cameras back, I don't know how you wanna do that. But I did ask the guys, and they said that midday like that's better, you know, or midweek was better for them, they didn't have any preference either. So, but if you're okay with that, then I'll let them know that. And it was Kuzner's and that, so it'll be, we'll put it, we'll start advertising it, that'll be September. That will give everybody, I might, I might not put in there until Wednesday morning, because it's gonna be Tuesday night overnight. We didn't want people coming overnight, you know, the...
I, I would say if we can, if, if the guys have a couple tarp's, that we throw some tarp's over and tie it on.
Until, until, um, Wednesday morning? Okay.
That morning.
And then maybe, um, and then they'll pick it up, because they said they couldn't tarp it, because they'd have to come here, tarp it, on tarp, you know what I mean?
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay, so have you guys tarp it?
If, if they got some tarp's that they could throw over it to try that.
For the, okay.
We need a motion, please.
We need a motion for that, okay?
I think you already approved us of doing it.
The actual date? No.
Oh, we, I don't think we, we did.
You didn't have an actual date.
So, Kyle, go ahead a second. Kevin? We'll take role, Kyle, Kevin?
Yep.
Lee?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yep.
And Steve?
Yep.
And B, you can cross off, because we, that's still on there, we're just waiting for one person, hasn't turned theirs in yet. And, um, so C, so, these are the current, um, nuisance reports we got. And before I send them out, because there's been much discussion from a couple council members, I haven't, I haven't said, hey, normally he sends us to him and says, this is what I'm gonna, you know, send out to everybody. And so I haven't said, okay, you know, even though, because I don't know how involved you guys wanna get in this. Do you want to just have him do it and stay neutral? Because I, I've had one or, one or two people come in from the council that don't agree with all of it, so then it puts me in the spot. Do I tell them to send them, or do you guys wanna review every one of them?
No, it's fixed.
That is? Okay. Or do you wanna review all of them before they're sent? But then we're not neutral again, so you guys tell me what you wanna do. Because right now, I don't, I'm, I don't get involved in them at all. He just says, I've got these, and I'm gonna send them out. So if you, do you wanna, if you start, if I have to give them to you guys and you approve them, then I don't know, you know, if you wanna get in the weeds or not with that.
That was the only problem, right?
Um...
Because that's all fixed.
No, I didn't.
That's what circles.
Like I said, I didn't, yeah. That in, let me see, the building belongs that person, some open areas on the building, technical, he didn't know if, yeah, this wasn't city limits, do you know? If that one is...
That's not, um, but that's all put back up.
Okay.
That whole fence is put up.
But, okay, that is, but that, the building parts probably maybe not. I think his question was this, but he still had this on the building.
He was down there clearing up and doing a bunch of stuff all week, so, but I know the fence is all put back up.
Okay, well, this hadn't even been sent, so he just did it to me.
Yeah, it's all, it was, he was down there.
Who, who's, where that's at?
So before, they was just sending the letter to me, I would review them, and then just tell them to send them out.
So do you, do you want to do, you guys wanna stay involved with that? Or do you think it will become impartial if we, if we say, send this, don't send this? You guys can tell me what you wanna do.
I think they just need to go.
That's kind of what I thought, because I like when people come in and they ask me about it, and I'm able to say, my hands are off of it, and they really are. On, I don't make the decisions on who gets one or who doesn't.
Did you see that one?
Yeah.
You know, when I think we're getting into sticky waters when we do that, you know, pick and choose.
Yes, I agree, I, I guess that...
But I want you guys to be aware of some of the stuff that, I don't think you get to see much of the color pictures, you get to see the letters, but not...
I need to go around with that. I guess we're going backwards on this.
You can just pile my dirt on.
You want a minute?
Yeah, I'll just gather what you guys are doing.
Thank you, Eli, I was stuck.
So we'll just say hands off on them then?
That's, as far as I'm concerned, that's what I think.
Intention, intention of it.
Right.
Yeah, I think so too, but I do have, I wanted everybody to know, because I do have some people come in and, and ask me, you know, even council members, and ask questions about them, and I wanna be able to say, my hands are tied. I mean, I'm, you guys make the decisions on what you wanna do, and if you wanna send them or not send them.
Because again, it's not fair to pick on some people and not pick on all parties.
I had one court tell me that her mayor and some council members went around to pick the houses that would be done. That did not go over very well. So that's why I was like, yeah, we don't do that, we stay out of this one, so...
Like you said, I don't want anyone to do that.
So just, that, I just wanna make sure that's what you guys are good with, so that we know that we're not making the decision on who's getting these and who's not getting these.
Yeah, I think just letting.
Just letting go, okay. I believe you know, I think that's, I can agree.
I mean, if they're not getting back to us at all, it's not our deal, I mean...
Well, I'll see this folder here, completely full of some of those where people are taking care of something else. So the next step was what we talked about, which I did send it to...
No, but I mean, some of the people, I mean, you replied back or nothing.
No, that's what I mean. So they'll get a second letter, and a certified letter, and then at that point, we, we will, we're going to, getting to the point now where we're gonna follow up with, like, I think you guys had said that at the last meeting, that we'll follow up with the attorney. And there's a few of them in there, you seen, where they wrote on the bottom to the attorney, on a few of those individual papers there, and that was why, because it's been multiple letters to those people with no response. So...
And when are they gonna start sending certified ones?
They, they did, a lot of people have gotten them, I got a stack of them like that already, yeah. And they might be one that are like out of town, don't live here and stuff, so... And then we get one, and once in a while, you see the one where they replied back, and wanted to, the water ran to their shop and stuff, and they could just reply back. So we do once in a while get something like that, so...
Okay, um, discuss the possible action on citizen's complaint, six oh three East Main.
So that was, um, Kenyon's shop down there, and we had, actually, two different people come in, and wanted to know if he was, if he knew about it being a continuous grog cell, or, you know, sell down there, or, you know, he must be bringing stuff in and leaving it set out.
All the time.
All the time, and then also, um, the one person asked me what that one was zoned, because this, you know, and, and so that one is also zoned light commercial. And he's got semis, he's done, he brought us one, is there, I don't know.
One trailer.
One trailer there, and, and they wanted to know if it was gonna continue to build up, and it would be multiple trailers there too.
See, do they need a business permit if they're going to be selling like that?
Well, I would think they probably would have to have a, kind of a perpetual fleet market, isn't it?
Would you think that they would have to...
There's a lot of nice stuff there.
Probably have to have some sort of business permit, if they're gonna have a regular income on the property.
Yeah, I would think they would have to have a business permit for that. If they're gonna continue that throughout the rest, and I'm assuming they're gonna continue it until the snowballs start flying.
I think, I think we need to keep on top of this, because if we're gonna be doing, making other people...
Oh yes, we, we need to make them follow the same rules. So whether they need a business permit, so be it, but to me, all that stuff sitting outside, when, where there's nobody around, that's just a mess waiting to happen, if we have a windstorm come through, it's gonna be into everybody's yard.
And what about the, it'd be the same thing with the semi there, semi trailer there, that's what I was asked in particular too.
Uh, that's...
Is that gonna be, is that allowable?
I...
Apparently it's full of stuff to sell, from what I understand.
Is it?
I don't know either, I didn't know how to answer. I don't know either, I didn't know how to answer it, so that's why I don't know, here we go.
I, I guess that that'll probably, after the board of adjustment means, that'll kinda answer that question too. I, I would say.
It's all stuff the landfill's been watching.
She sounds like it to me, looks like it. I have a nice view of that from my place.
I didn't even know what his address was. He had packages delivered to six five two.
So as of right now, then just, we're just gonna, you want me to follow up on, see if they have a business permit and then, and then on hold for anything else until, for the desperate need?
We'd definitely send all the stuff to-
Well, they would have come through you to get a business permit one night.
I would, I would, I would take a bunch of, uh, photos and then email them to Steve.
Yeah.
And let him look at it.
We need to do a little bit of research on it, because I'm understanding he's living in there too.
The water has not been on.
I know that.
For, since, um, Charlotte.
So, huh?
So there, and now she has, it's been done.
So I don't know what he's doing.
Who, nobody's up there, where did that?
Um, yeah, there was a little, there was a leak, kind of on and off in there, she had water.
Oh, that's been, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's been quite a while ago.
That was when I first started.
Probably three years, two years.
Yeah, she had the water there for about three years.
Yeah. See, he's been there since they sold the farm.
Yep.
So, yeah, they can't afford something better than that. You, I heard they'd be gonna, come in on that.
Okay.
It's free, okay.
Huh?
It's free.
Yeah, but they got off the farm.
Anyway, shall we move along? Discuss a possible action to approve sidewalk permit, uh, program and permit.
So that one was here, I don't know who signed these, do you, for the permits here? This is for the sidewalk permit here.
That's just the grant they gave her, uh-
Yeah, it is the grant, so we have, we'll have to have a motion on it, but I wasn't for sure what you guys do with these.
I don't think-
We've never signed it.
We don't sign it, they just fill out the application.
Okay.
And how much they're applying, and then the contractor is whoever the contractor is, or if it's self.
Okay.
Could be self, if they're doing it themselves.
What about this, where?
Oh, the, okay, so this, then this would be Rod.
Okay.
Because he will have to go down-
Market.
He will have to approve this, and then he will have to do the inspection.
So you guys just are gonna go on the, on the grant for the cement, is that right?
Yes, the, we're literally put eight, six hundred dollars.
I think it was in there, we'll look it up, it's, it's a certain amount.
Yes.
It dropped down.
A cap of seven hundred and fifty dollars per applicant. So, I'll make a motion. Um, basic pending Rod's approval.
Pending approval?
That would be my opinion, so. So Kyle and Craig, take role, Kyle.
Yep.
Kevin. Lee.
Yeah.
Craig.
Yep.
And Steve.
Yep.
Okay, discuss a possible action to approve WDC and have Main Street, uh, light poles, bridge railing, new sidewalk railings, fence located at the west end of Main Street painted black.
So you guys had discussed this already on the light poles, but they came back and wanted to add in the fence. And it's the fence, I believe, that goes up the sidewalk, that new fence, and they wanted in sidewalk railings. So in order to do this stuff, um, their painter still hasn't gotten back to me. Um, we need a proof of insurance, and I contacted the DOT, because now they're gonna be, they, they wanna do the rails, if you guys approve it on the bridge, and there's a permit involved with that. Well, and when I, in talking to the DOT, they sent me a, you guys have that, um, they sent me a-
Maintain and repair.
Yeah, and, and all that, and I just want you to be aware that, so if we do have these painted, we have to maintain all that. So if the paint, you know, to ensure that the, the painter knows what he's doing, the paints are the correct type of paint, because now you're doing light poles, railings, fence, everything, and if it's not-
DOT approved.
Well, yeah, and if it's not-
No, it just has to continue, we have to continue.
You gotta continue to main, maintain it, because we're going from just light poles now to all this, which would look fabulous, I, I really think, I just want you to be aware that-
But it's not, it costs us nothing, I mean, they're paying for it.
Just the upkeep.
Right.
In the future.
In mind in the future, if-
So that's all it was, I just wanted you to be aware that they wanted to extend the painting, and that if, if you guys approve the painting, then it's up to the city to maintain it afterwards. So he's gonna provide, um, I asked for references, and I asked for, um, you know, maybe the type of paint, because you don't know, you don't, you know, if he had references, he's done this before, and then he's gotta get permit before he can do anything, so we're still waiting on all that. And I just wanted, and because we had only voted before just to do the light poles.
I mean, obviously, Kelly, talk to him, they know what you're doing, obviously, and they're kind of on the fly already, so.
Yeah.
I mean, they're gonna know what kind of paint to use.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah.
Because I wouldn't have a clue.
Right.
So I motion to approve the rest of it that they want to paint. Steve, and second by Lee, take role, Kyle.
Yep.
Kevin.
Yep.
Lee.
Yeah.
Craig.
Yep.
And Steve.
Yep.
Okay, moving on down, finance. A, discuss a possible action approving resolution for Cockings bookkeeping reimbursement through the city.
So you guys will see on the first page there, um, the current agreement with the Cockings is, um, fifteen seventy-five a year. Is what they're paying, thanks Pam. Is fifteen seventy-five a year, is what they're currently paying, which the monthly breakdown is one thirty-one, twenty-five, and the weekly breakdown that they're paying the city to do all their bookkeeping is thirty dollars and point nine cents. And that includes emails, gathering keys, collecting keys, taking phone calls.
So it's about two hours a week?
Oh, at least.
Wow, I'm just saying.
She just spent two hours doing-
I'm just saying, two hours a week.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, not even that, by the time you figure benefits and stuff like that, so one hour a week.
Oh, oh, you mean the amount, I thought you meant the amount of work, yeah.
No, no, I'm just saying, but they obviously do more.
Yeah, there, it's not- And we, you know, so this is, this is what they've been paying so far, um, right now, in the, the resolution from that one, it actually was upped in twenty-one, so the resolution current, the previous to this one was in twenty twenty-one is when they agreed to do the fifteen seventy-five. And, um, so I put a couple of different amounts in here for you guys to, to look at and see what you consider and what you think.
Guess, Matt, how many hours a week?
Between the both of us? For me, at least, at least an hour a day, so five hours a week probably.
And I, like, recently I've been doing that, I've done the Amazon orders, email answering, phone calls, procedures, I mean, it's, it's a lot. We do all the financials for them, we do, we do just about everything but show the arm.
So, would you say ten hours a week we're spending?
I would say, I'd say between five and ten, depending what's going on, so.
Some weeks are busier than others, when the beginning is the, in our council times, obviously, when I'm more busy.
Well, you just spent like two, what, at least two hours setting up that, setting up some, because they don't, sometimes they don't, they're not sure on what to do with it, was, um, setting them up to have, as in, as a, what?
Just, they're handling their finances, I have to fill out all their paperwork if they wanna buy something big.
Mm, that took a while.
So that takes me, so it's just certain things like that, like, that'll take me a little longer, but I mean, um, I'm not, you know, mainly writing out the reports anymore, but I do have to explain what the finances are.
Yeah, we, we, we take that incoming, like, if there's any money that comes in, a lot of times it's all just dropped off here. Every, we get everything, we get the keys, we have to send the emails, hey, we have keys, we have contracts, you know, this is what's going on now, so it's, it's a lot more involved than what I think it is, so.
It, it, this hasn't been, so, so they were concerned, they, they said something to me, I told them to put together some numbers.
Well, in the contract, this is, I think it was, it's September first, we can redo it again, too, so.
So, yeah, so if it's gonna be up for renewal in September, we just kinda need to think, figure out where we need to be, or we think we need to be.
Just go for the bottom, or then we done with it.
With the thirty-five hundred dollars. It's, now, now granted, we can just, you know, propose that.
I mean, it's sixty-seven a week, is all it is.
Yeah.
That's not a lot of money.
Not really.
It's a little different when you break it down, that's why I broke it down, to show-
Well, it looks better when you break it down.
Who does?
Yeah.
Yeah. So is that a motion? Can present that for the next contract? Do I have a second? Kevin, will take role, Kyle.
Yep.
Kevin.
Yeah.
Lee.
Yeah.
Craig.
Yep.
And Steve.
Yep.
So next week, we'll have to present that to them.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, already? Holy crap. Okay, so much for my week.
So in the next ones, we do have H, but I, Jane, K, they still haven't got the paperwork back to me, so you can cross those out, I, Jane, K.
Can we just make a motion of, um, getting paperwork and then it's done?
I don't, I don't-
You can, you can.
I mean, we've always done it the same way.
I mean, if you do, that's-
You can make the motion that if, I mean, it's just like, it's just like a cigarette and alcohol.
Yeah, there's only one or two things I'm waiting for, they-
I mean, once you get it, then it's done, so.
Okay, yeah, if I didn't know, you could do that.
Yes.
Exactly.
Technically, if you wanted to go H through K, as long as all the paperwork is filed.
That's what I meant.
Okay.
And do it under one motion.
Yep.
So-
I'll second that.
H, so this is, we're gonna do H through K, so that is- Senior dining, jets, tourism, and extension.
It's gotta be camp.
Or ISU.
Yeah, the ISU extension.
Well, H, I, can you do, like, H I already have, that, I mean, can you, should we separate that one or no, okay?
As, as long as they have all the paperwork, you can proceed.
Okay.
Correct?
Yep.
And that was your motion, and who had the second? Craig did. So take, take role, Kyle.
Yep.
Kevin.
Yep.
Lee.
Yeah.
Craig.
Yep.
And Steve.
Yep.
Okay, discuss a possible action, resolution for deliberate customer policy.
That came about, there was a, a change in the law on, you had to go from a ten day notice to a twelve day notice, and that's all that is, and, and, um, you had that resolution in front of you, because I need to send that in tomorrow.
We already talked about that our last, or changing it either.
Yeah, I think, I think we had, or, or that we were, we talked about, we would do it on this next meeting, I think. So that's, that's just by, that's just the law, is what it is, we're changing it from a ten day notice.
So motion, Kevin, second, Lee. Kyle.
Yep.
Kevin. Lee.
Yeah.
Craig.
Yep.
And Steve.
Yep.
Discuss impossible action approving resolution for application for tax abatement for four oh five North Oak.
And that's the new house up on the hill.
Does that, it, I've had people ask me, is that gonna be a trailer?
No, it's gonna be, I specifically asked him, he came back in again to ask me where this was at, to make sure he could go ahead and start build, building, which he can, according to what we looked up, and, um, I asked him again, and it's stick built.
Okay.
It'll be stick built.
I had someone ask me, so I'm sure, I'm sure that guy's not gonna build, build something up there and then we're gonna have more, like, houses.
Yeah, he, technically, if he wanted to put a mobile home in there, though, as long as it met the guidelines of being big enough, I don't think there's anything in Wyoming that says he couldn't.
Motion approved, Kevin, second. Craig, will take role, Kyle.
Yep.
Kevin.
Yeah.
Lee.
Yeah.
Craig.
Yep.
Steve.
Yep.
Okay, first report, discuss impossible action approving the second reading of ordinance.
So be second and third.
Well, this one will be second.
Yeah.
Uh, amending the city clerk. So, do I have a motion? Craig, no, second, Steve. Kyle.
Yep.
Kevin.
Yeah.
Lee.
Yeah.
Craig.
Yep.
Steve.
Yep.
Okay, second reading of an ordinance amending the city treasurer. Kevin, do I have a second? Lee. Kyle.
Yep.
Kevin. Lee.
Yeah.
Craig.
Yep.
Steve.
Yep.
Third reading on the city clerk, do I have a motion? Craig, second, Kyle. Kyle.
Yep.
Kevin.
Yeah.
Lee.
Yeah.
Craig.
Yep.
Steve.
Yep.
Third reading on the city treasurer, I have a motion, Kevin, second, by Lee, Kyle.
Yep.
Kevin.
Yeah.
Lee.
Yeah.
Craig.
Yep.
Steve. Okay, uh, DOT evaluating bridges for emergency vehicle annual report due December thirty first.
And Rochelle has this one, so she's gonna talk about it.
So, uh, we got an email about a month ago about the, from the DOT stating that they were changing their, uh, um, they're changing their guidelines to what, they wanna know what is crossing a bridge, and so they wanna know, um, emergency vehicles in, in specifics, so, um, I contacted Derek Sneed about it, and he told me the steps to go about it and to present to the council, um, and I, he told me to get ahold of fire chiefs to get the-
The weights?
The weights and, um, the truck, year types and serial numbers, which I already, I'm on top of that, already went and did this. So, um, basically, we have to submit this to the DOT by December first, twenty twenty-four, but Derek said just to get it out of the way and get it done. So we present this, we get this information, he told me to get the data, and then he, uh, highly suggested going with Origin Design to send this information to the structural engineer, so they'll come, they'll gather my data that I got, and, um, judging by the size of the bridges, um, there'll be like a fee for them to come and, um, say that basically it's okay for our fire trucks to cross the bridges, they'll send this to the DOT and we'll be taken care of. So, um, I did speak to a gal on the phone today from, from Origin Design, so we're going to be in contact with each other, I'm gonna send her this stuff, and she's gonna send me on what she proposes, so when I get that, I'll present it to you at the next meeting, but, um, I just, I, I don't know if I need a motion to go with the Origin Design for the structural engineer, um, we've gone with them in the past for other projects, and they've been very wonderful to work with.
They're the coolest bridge inspectors, so I would be horrified.
Okay.
No, no, nobody else around here that I know of that, for engineering, for, does bridge inspections?
Yeah, so-
And fire trucks don't go across any of the bridges anyhow, other than this one.
They, we just, we, we have to add them.
Well, I'm sure it's just-
So, just so we are covered through the Iowa DOT, we are correlating with the laws.
Shall be fine, what we do about Christmas celebration, or we have some semis over this bridge, it's fine.
It's, this was specifically for emergency vehicles.
Yes. Okay, so you got your guidance. Discuss a possible action approving city clerk to a strand, street finance training, nine six, free class, carpool to O'Wine, city clerk treasurer, nine twenty, nine twenty-two, Iowa League Conference, both are registered, Tammy and Rochelle carpool to Cedar Rapids, city hall will be closed Wednesday through Friday.
So you had already previously approved us, um, going to the training, um, that's paid for already for the conference, we were registered for it. But, um, in looking at it and everything, we've been talking about it, we were like, we're looking out to close city hall for those three days, so that's what we're looking at.
Put it on the website and call it in.
Hey, we can, we can't miss the opportunity.
Right.
And they're willing to go, so.
And then, well, in the first class, Rochelle opted to, because of kids, I think, too, she's gonna, she-
She's online.
It, it's the free one, um, I'm carpooling with some other clerks to the O'Wine one, and she's just gonna do an online one there, so. That's all it was, was just to let you know basically more about closing city hall.
Okay, Kyle, do I have a second? Kevin, take role, Kyle.
Yep.
Kevin.
Yeah.
Lee.
Yeah.
Craig.
Yep.
And Steve.
Yep.
Okay, November seventh, the election packet's available for interested candidates.
So you do have that, um, the packets are there, I did put this in here on who was, on who was up for, right here. And you have, um, so I made some extra packets here, and they're, the packets are right here, and I did put in your, like, this, I think it's the board of adjustment, if you look at here, this is the newest.
Oh, that's the newest one.
Yeah, so you guys all have one of these in there with all the boards and their dates, if you wanna take it out and put it in the front pocket, it does.
Yes, that's a easy goal.
It's, it actually helps a lot with that, in your book you have that.
And the zoning map.
And the zoning map is a good one to keep, too, that's why I made colored ones for you guys. So here is, and it does tell you who's up for election.
Who's up?
So that'd be the mayor, um, Steve Harms, uh, Kevin Leonard, and Craig Taylor. So with Steve's position, it also is, if any, if you or anybody else, anybody that runs for that position, you do have to make sure that you're, that you mark that it's, um, that you were appointed, and it's also just, um, filling in the rest of that term. So it right here tells you this, so that yours is to fill a vacancy.
Yep.
So it's two years to fill a vacancy, so anybody, so if you're going to run for that, that's what it would be, is the, it's.
Oh, well, that's right, because that's what it was.
Yeah.
We filled it to now, and then.
Yeah, so that his, the other ones are a regular council at large, so it'd be, um, the four years for the council members, and there's two seats on there, and then there's a mayor position, too, on, a regular one there for two years, so. I didn't realize you had to do every two years.
Yeah, it's one.
So everybody has one of those in there?
Oh, this is the packet.
Well, that's not, that just is what I just read to you, here's the packet. So if you guys wanna pack it, take a packet, and I can make more. They're gonna, who else needed one? Hmm, Craig, Kevin, Steve. Craig, you got one?
Yeah, I guess. I had one.
There, there's no one. Steve. Kevin, do you get one?
We gotta go get two signatures, don't we? Yes, and, and once we get it done, we're going to just slide it around the table quick.
Yes, so that's the reminder. Yeah, because you have to make sure you get the, enough signatures on there and everything, so.
Cause it's due in September sometime.
And you guys have to turn them in, so I can't do that for you.
Well, yeah, we gotta bill the court hours, don't we? Okay, mayor, council reports, islands for the next agenda, anything?
I do still need a sidewalk bill from the overbridge.
They're, um, I think they're gonna fix something on the side of that wall yet, that little. And I went down there and talked to them about the flaking, well, you've seen it too, it was just. You could take an ice cream, or we could go down there, you and I could go down there and get it off if we wanted to.
We haven't looked at, have just a flat shovel, take care of that.
That's, I mean, we could go down and do it quick.
What happened was?
They broomed it and dried.
It was too dry.
It was too dry, I mean, when they broomed it.
We've had floors, just, our, right. We've, I've seen that happen in our.
I, and then that's the way, reason they did that, so we didn't want it to smooth finish, so instead it was gonna be like a walk-in on ice, so.
Yeah.
I think they did it just.
Yeah, it was good, it was nice, we gotta paint the lines, Rochelle. Or, I mean, if you wanna put out the guys, if they can repaint the, no parking and the new white lines before it gets in winter, then it's just.
Are they gonna shorten up the, one of the Main Street then? I know we talked about short, where, where the handicap is, then you got blocked off. I thought you said, so there, there's enough room, that you can put another vehicle on there.
On the Main Street?
Yeah.
I don't think we can, because I think that's where the DOT said we had to put the lines.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're the ones that we wanted to shorten.
We wanted to shorten that up, there would've been room for them to do that, but we couldn't do it because.
DOT wouldn't like it.
Right, it's gotta have so much. I mean, there would've been enough room to, if we could've shortened that up, but.
Yeah.
With the.
So on that side and not there. I don't know.
Did they, somebody, Rod checked into there, somebody checked into it.
Somebody checked into it, and it's.
I remember that.
I, I don't remember why.
Yeah, I don't either.
I don't know.
The only other thing I had, and it doesn't really, I'm just throwing it out there, I got a phone call today from, um, somebody in Anamosa that wants to open up a retail space here in town, and is looking for a store or someplace to open a retail under a thousand square feet, thousand square feet or under, don't know if anybody knows anything, I mean, it's always nice to have a new business or a business come in town. Um, don't know if I should put it on our, if that's something we put on our website, open on our website, or if it's just something that.
Somebody might have a building they wanna rent out, why not?
Yeah, you could.
I'd put it on the website.
Because it, you know, I mean, it's a potential business, you know?
Yeah.
And we always need and want those, but, um, so he gave me his phone number, sounded like a young man, and he just told me retail space. Before I put it out there, I would call him and find out what kind of retail space we don't want.
Yeah.
But, you know.
Um, one of the things, and I didn't think of it when Rod was here, I think we used to have like a verbal agreement or whatever with Holly in far as the snow and taking care of the property and that kinda stuff, so we need to get in contact with the new owners to find out if that's still gonna work, or.
If they'll leave the drive open?
Yeah, yeah, because everybody, you always push the snow down there, and that's where it went. The, the other concern that I have is technically we don't own that alley.
Did Holly sell that or not?
Yes.
Yes, it's been sold.
I have his number, so.
So that is the other concern that I have, is we don't own that alley, and they can shut it out at any time if they wanted to.
He doesn't have a walk-in.
Explain them, we used to do, like you said, have the agreement, and I'm sure they're gonna be a problem.
I, I don't know, but like I said, I think we used to mow for Holly that part of it, you know, along the creek, and then we could push snow there, and, and then we clean it up afterwards, and so.
Maybe tell them we're gonna keep doing the same thing, that's all we.
Yeah, we just gotta tell them, we gotta talk to them and find out, like I said, we, I'm, I'm a little concerned if he decides that he wants to close that alley. A lot of people that use that alley, and the city doesn't own it.
How, how, that's interesting, the city doesn't own that.
We don't own the other side either.
Really?
Nope.
How come, so is that, right?
No.
No.
Lyle owns part of it.
Who?
Lyle Waters.
What about that alleyway between the houses and businesses?
That city owns.
This one?
Yeah.
Yes.
You gotta have an exit there.
Well, but we own from that alley north to the school, or to the.
Oh, I thought you said you didn't know.
We don't own this stretch here, that's from Main Street to the alley.
Yeah.
That's.
Well, I thought you said we didn't own the other one either.
No, this one over here, I was talking, on here, so.
Oh, this side by.
By Wicks.
Okay.
Part of it belongs to Buckholz, and part of it belongs to Lyle Waters.
You got like eight foot or six or, is some goofy.
It, it's, when you look it up on Beacon and you look at the flats, so sometime, we, we need to do something, we need to, as far as I'm concerned, we need to purchase these alleys, if we can.
Do we have to annex them then, or how's that work?
We just have to purchase the alleys and.
Cause Lyle Waters property's gonna be for sale, I think.
Probably.
We said something about Gabe, Gabe's trying to get it.
All that, so, but anyway, I'm just saying, we should be looking forward at those two pieces about trying to get those alleys, because people use those alleys all the time. So, just something to think about, and we can put on the next meeting and talk about it, as far as I'm concerned, so. All right, nine A, discuss impossible action, approving liquor license renewal for Dollar General.
And she does have her, she's got her, um, her fire report, and then, like, everything I need, we have everything that we need, we just need approval from you guys. We'll make them submitted.
Steve, do I have a second? Kevin, take role, Kyle.
Yep.
Kevin.
Yep.
Lee.
Yeah.
Craig.
Yep.
Steve.
Yep.
Okay, the sheriff's report is in your packet, we don't have a sheriff here, so unless somebody else has anything else, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, yeah, uh, Bruno's saying, last weekend, there was, uh, somebody pulling a wagon, come from south, out of town, went back into the lagoons.
Somebody from the south?
Yeah, I don't know, she didn't know who it was or nothing, or what was in the wagon, but I don't think we need to have somebody from out of town bringing stuff in and dump back there.
No, you shouldn't.
What kind of wagon?
I don't know.
Don't matter, there shouldn't be anybody, because the, you're supposed to have.
She said, she said it came from the south, so.
So I, I don't know if this is it or not, but we did have, so the, the guy that's building the new house up here, he was driving in circles trying to find it, and he had a, a trailer, 'cause I looked out the window with, um, a black one, so you could ask her.
I never.
He had a black, a pickup truck with a black trailer full of branches, 'cause I told him they had to be within the size, and he told me he had drove by it, and it couldn't find it, so I don't know if it was him.
Went by and turned around.
And he had to turn around, and he came in to ask me, he said, I can't, where am I supposed to go, so I explained to him how to get out there. I don't know if that was it or not, but.
I'll ask for what color it was.
It was, I don't remember the color of the truck, but I, but his trailer was like a dump trailer, like we have, with a black.
Mm-hmm, they'll shut the gate.
So, and I.
Well, but if it was that guy.
If it's that guy, it ain't gonna matter.
He lives uptown. I mean, the.
He and ours isn't supposed to have a lockable gate on our, why would we say that if it wasn't supposed to be locked?
They're supposed to come down, technically, you're supposed to come down with a signal and key.
Well, and we've been leaving it open, because nobody's been abusing the privileges, so.
What do you do, somebody goes down there someday and rides a golf cart, or some kid gets in one of them stagger systems?
Well, then.
Then we're gonna have a lawsuit.
It's a possibility.
Do we have cameras out there at all?
No, there's no cameras.
Shut the gate, stop it.
So.
Can we shut the gate on the weekends without locking it?
You can. Yeah, use your gate.
Most people are bringing stuff out there in the weekend.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I took stuff from the fairgrounds there last weekend, so I think it was Saturday.
I mean, they could know.
I mean, not gonna worry, because we ain't had a problem yet.
Yeah. But. So like I said, we can shut it at any time, you guys have to decide what.
Lost it.
What we're gonna do. It was, it was decided at that point in time, because nobody had been abusing the privileges, that we were just gonna leave the gate open. I, I know that there's people that take bigger stuff out there than the six inches, but it's all burning.
I've said it before at another meeting, but there was side by side out there a couple times, so.
I know you said that. But.
Also, Dollar General's lagoon, you got a bunch of saplings growing up on.
Yeah, I mentioned that, so. First of all, maintain that, it should be mowed.
Well, Sherry said she was, before she retired, said she was gonna call, huh?
She might've forgotten.
And that's two, three years, and it looks pretty bad.
Yeah.
I mean, whoever's mowing, I oughta know that, I mean, granted, there's water in there, you're not gonna get in there with a mower, but.
Yeah.
Maybe they're not supposed to mow.
Wish they would've had to put that even in there, but.
Right.
That's. So let's send them a letter, reminding them about the trees and the mowing and that stuff in there, please. Anything else? If nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn? Kyle, do you have a second? Lee, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those? Motion carries. Twenty-two. So if you would please sign, if you want me to be mayor.